Okay, uh, to start with, I'm gonna ask for a motion to waive reading of the remote meeting regulations.
So moved.
Second. If there's any discussion, you can roll that out. Okay, hearing no discussion, uh, all in thinking one call Tim?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Norm?
Aye.
Okay, um, does anybody have any questions or correction on minutes? If there is, I think I've just assumed, hold them off and then directly to Cal Hope.
Yes, I do have, uh...
Okay, yes, I know.
Yes.
Okay. Any objections to moving, uh, moving to a little bit later?
I have no objection whatsoever.
Okay.
Get Carl out of the way.
Okay, then Carl, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Excellent.
What have you got?
So, I don't know if you remember or not, but we were talking about a couple of months ago, uh, the pavement cross-section subdivision rules and regulations. Uh, currently, the regulations call for eighteen inches of bank run glap gravel with six inches more gravel on top of that, and then the pavement is two inches of binder and a one-inch top course. And we talked about, um, how that compares to other municipalities and twenty-four inches of gravel is, is great. Um, other municipalities have twelve inches, is typical, um, but if you can, and we also talked about how, when a subdivision roadway gets built, um, the gravel, it's not costing the town anything, it's costing developer money, so I don't, I don't think you should change it. I think it's pretty good, I think it's actually a really good base, um, but what I would change is the depth of asphalt. And so then we started talking about, well, what type of asphalt we're using. So right now, the subdivision regulations say it's gotta be in accordance with the DOT specifications, and so the DOT changed their specification a couple of years ago from what you would call a recipe mix, which is basically just, um, asphalt and stone and aggregate, that kinda stuff, to what's called super pave, which is pavement, but it's designed specifically for certain loadings. So, for example, like I-290 or interstate's, you sort of estimate how many axle loads are gonna be on that roadway during the course of its life, you design it based on that, which is good, or highways, I think for subdivision roadways, it's probably a little, a little bit much, to be honest with you. So, um, I talked to Joe Buckley earlier today, I don't know, I don't think he's on the call, but I talked to him earlier today. He likes super pave, in certain instances, uh, subdivision roadways, uh, is not in one of them. So, what I think you guys might wanna consider doing is stick with what you got, basically the, the recipe mix for asphalt. Um, you can, I talked to Joe a little bit about this as well, um, you could sort of put a spec in your subdivision regulations, because the DOT spec is now out of date. You could put the spec directly in your subdivision regulations.
You're in all in the office?
And go based on that. Um, and if you want, if you wanna give a developer the option of submitting a super pave mix or a review, you could do that too, but I think super pave is gonna be more advanced than you guys maybe wanna get into, 'cause there's, there's quality control that's required at the plant, there's quality control that's required when it's putting, when it's getting put down, and there's, there's testing and stuff that goes along with it that's, we do testing now, but the super pave testing is way more advanced. So, those are my thoughts on it. Um, you guys have any questions or thoughts?
Carl, is there, I'm just, it's five minutes of thought, is there any place that we might need that super pave? 'Cause I, I, obviously, I don't think of it in the subdivisions. Um, I, I, the only place I could think it'd be needed would be on roadways, and that's Joe Buckley's, um, when I say town roadways, that's Joe Buckley's realm, not ours.
Correct. So I talked to Joe about that as well, so he, he would like, if possible, sort of have, um, the DBW and the highway pavement specifications sort of mirror what the subdivisions are, so that there's a consistency in the town, which makes sense. Um, so like I said, he, he's not a big fan of super pave for small roads, like subdivision roads, so we talked about how much asphalt and how much gravel and stuff like that, I think we, we agree on that, and you could put a spec, like I said, directly into subdivision regulations, so that the developer knows exactly what to do, I know exactly what to check for, that kinda stuff, so that there's a consistency, and he, he's used certain specs recently for doing work around town, which he's satisfied with, and it, I looked at it briefly today, and it looks very similar to what DOT used to specify, so it seems like it's all the same stuff, it's just a matter of putting it in the regulations so that the town regulations no longer reference the outdated DOT regulations, and you guys have your own, um, your own specification for it. I also, so I also called around to make sure that the plants are still gonna be manufacturing the quote-unquote recipe mix pavement, because DOT specifies super pave now, um, federal highway administration likes super pave for big roads, but, um, I was concerned that there wouldn't be any availability of the recipe mix stuff, but the, the plant operator said, yep, we make it, we're still gonna keep making it, so there's no issue with availability of that kinda pavement.
Carl?
Yeah.
Dick Williams here. Question, which one will stay together the longest and not crack? Because I'm noticing that pavement lately, for a lot of you, only get one or two years, and it's that's cracking automatically, and it just seems like the old stuff stayed together better.
Yep, so, so that's where I would say, you might, you guys might wanna change your regulations, you require two inches of binder now and a one-inch top, I think you wanna up those dimensions, so they put at least two and a half of binder and one and a half of top, so you go from a three-inch total thickness to at least a four-inch total thickness. That'll help structurally, um, with the gravel and sub drains, crack, cracking in roadways almost is directly correlated to, to water under the roadway somewhere, so...
Yep.
Control the water, make it structurally sound, it should, it should last a long time.
Okay. Is that, I'm sorry Carl, about two and a half and one and a half, is that standard throughout other municipalities?
So, there's a little bit of a, yeah, there's a little bit of a mix there, um, some municipalities have two and one, others have two and a half and one. If you're gonna do it, I'd say up it, just, just to be safe, you know, there's, like I said, there's no cost to the town for this, it's the developer's costs for building the subdivision, so if you're gonna do it and eventually take the roadway over, you might as well get a better, I think our pavement.
With, with potholes under it, because they'll get washed out, 'cause it was just, I, I like it, I like the two and a half and one and a half.
I do too.
Yeah. So, Carl, so you mentioned that, um, trying to match up with Chief Buckley's, are we, the only, would the only thing we'd have to change in our subdivision regs is this, uh, asphalt, uh, size? Do we, do we still match up, or are we off with the, um, yeah, the eighteen and the eighteen base, and then, uh, six of compacted, uh, stone and gravel?
So that's a good question, I'm not sure about that. I looked at, I looked at the paving spec quickly today, he sent it to me like five o'clock, like an hour and a half ago, so I, I could look at it quickly, but I didn't get a chance to go through it totally, so...
There's twenty-four hours in a day, you've got plenty of time.
I know, I know, I know.
But, I, I, all I wanna do is, is match up with Chief Buckley, and then add in this two and a half and one and a half, and I think we're, we're done.
Yeah.
I don't know what the rest of it looks like.
I think as long as we're coordinated, that's, that's great, um, and like, like I was saying to Joe earlier today, people have been paving roads for a long time, um, with this recipe mix, and roadways in general hold up pretty well, as long as you, like I said, control the water, so I don't see any, any reason to go to the super pave mix just yet.
Except on Palm and Gussitt between Britmell and sixty-eight.
We need to go back to pub mix on that.
I'm fine with that.
So, uh, Carl, uh, can you send us the language that we would need to put into our subdivision regs? So we're specifying the correct type of asphalt?
Yeah, so what, what I think would be a good idea would be to, for me to do that, I'll coordinate with Joe, and then maybe circle back once more, go through everything, so you guys know exactly what everything says and how it reads and stuff like that, so that everybody's on board, and we come up with like a final draft at that point, does that work for you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That sounds good, I'll do that then.
I think we're gonna have plenty of time with the cost of lumber right now to get our subdivision regs updated.
Yeah, well, the thing is, this still wouldn't apply to some of it.
No, but I think there's a lot of them that, uh, coming up on their second or third two-year renewal. That's where I'm having a problem, anyhow, it's, it's not tonight.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry to come in so late, it's Cle, I don't know if you can see me, but, um, the, uh, I heard somebody say eighteen and six, you went back to eighteen and six for a gravel base?
Yeah.
And then, and you still up the side, the width of the, of the pavement, the thickness of the pavement? I thought we determined that we didn't need, I thought you guys determined you didn't need to do that. Would, how come you have to have so much gravel underneath the damn thing?
Because we're in Rockland.
Well, that has nothing to do with anything, that means you're on a remote, on the side of a mountain.
To that, Carl was gonna check with, with Chief Buckley to see what he's using.
Yes.
And that's what we're gonna probably go with, so if the chief's got less, Cle, we'll use less, 'cause we wanna match up with the chief, I think that was our goal.
Yeah.
Well, the question, I, the question is, I, or, or at least my statement is that, I build roads in a lot of towns, and no town has the spec that you guys have, and I think Carl may be able to back me up on that. They usually are twelve inches of, of inch and a half minus, and I, and that's, and that's really nice stuff, but it's twelve inches of inch and a half minus, if you've got proper sub drains, you're not gonna wash, that's not gonna wash out from underneath it. We built roads like that forever, and now with it, you know, with eighteen, what are you doing, eighteen inches of six-inch minus still, and then the six, the, the six inches on top, what inch and a half minus, Carl, is that what it is?
That's what it is now, yeah.
It is now, but I mean, is that what the, the new reg's gonna be, the new, uh, cross-section?
Well, it's up to these guys to the board to, to determine that.
Before you decide, can I complain? Yeah, I mean, I, I, I just think it's just so much to have that much gravel in the road, it's just, it's, it's, it's a waste of material. But, so that's just my two cents, I know you haven't made up your mind yet, but please take, I, take it from a guy who builds an awful lot of roads, lays down a lot of gravel, you don't need that much. Anyways, that's all, thank you.
Actually, we may have another place to use that gravel.
Yes, maybe another place for that gravel, Cle, for you, personally.
Oh, goodie. I can't wait to see what you guys have in mind.
Okay, do we have anything more for Carl?
Yes, one other quick one.
Oh, yeah, the report.
So, uh, Carl, since you're here for this one?
Sure.
Um, I had a question about whether or not a certain change in materials could be considered a field change?
Yeah, that was...
Maybe we could just talk about that real quick, that would be under the heading of Bear Hill Two.
Yeah, sure. Yep, so, um, I do inspections at Bear Hill Two, they started tying in utilities in the Cleveland Circle, um, the drains that they're installing in Bear Hill Two are HDPE, which is like the black corrugated plastic pipe, uh, the plans call for reinforced concrete pipe, so it's, it's a difference, and I didn't, I didn't have anything in my file that something had been changed somewhere along the lines, so I sent an email, I think last Friday, sort of asking if that had happened, um, I don't know if it has, um, I don't have a problem with the HCP, to be honest with you, um, it's, it's used in a lot of other subdivisions that are, that have been built recently in town, so it's a, it's an adequate material, it's equivalent, I think, to RCP, it's easier to work with, it's definitely a lot lighter, um, but it's up to you guys to sort of, I think, okay, that change, and it's however you wanna do it, if it's a field change or something else, um, but like I said, I'm, I'm okay with a change.
That was the question, how, how to handle that question?
I just wanna document, it's all I want, I don't care, I, I'm fine with the, the, we use that gas all over the, that same type all over this.
Oh, yeah, we've used it, uh, I'm even thinking of maybe using Bear Hill, uh, I think it has been used in parts of, uh, Grace, Lemon, or Lenny.
God, it's all we've used in Grace.
Carl, is there any, is there any, uh, difference in installation between that and concrete for like base or depth or anything like that?
I think it's, I think it's pretty comparable, the manufacturer has some requirements for the HCP installation, but I, I think it's comparable.
We use a lot more stone.
Yeah.
We use a lot more stone, Carl.
Yeah.
With the HDPE.
Okay. I, I mean, honestly, Norm, as long as it's documented, that's all I care about.
I, I guess I'm just thinking that maybe this is something we could take a vote on, to say that the use of this plastic pipe would be considered field change.
Okay with that. Uh, motion, is this Bear Hill Two?
Yes.
Yeah.
In particular, yes.
All right, that, no house, we're just building the roads, right?
Yes.
Okay, just remembering my, seven or eight years ago. I guess I'll make a motion to accept a field change from RCP drain pipe to ADS-N12 pipe for Bear Hill Two, uh, road drainage.
Second that.
Well, it's HDPE. Okay, HDPE, like...
What?
It's HDPE.
H?
D. P.
D. H. Then Carl, what's this ADS-N12 being installed in your report?
It's the proprietary version of HDPE.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know that. I thought...
Yeah, are there any other...
All right, so...
...technologies for that?
Yeah, what's, what...
What else can it be called?
Yeah, Carl, what do we, what do we wanna put on, uh, do we wanna put the HT or HD, um, how's it?
HDPE.
H.
That's the generic name for it, so...
Yeah. On our plan, and then stay away from this ADS, ADS-N12, since it's a, uh, brand name?
Yep, you can just call it that, it's HDPE.
Oh, there it is, HDP, correct? High-density polyethylene, how did I not know that? Um, okay, I'll change my motion to include that.
No, I'll change my second to include that.
Is there any further discussion?
Tamika, I'm sorry to interrupt, can you just repeat what the pipe is that was originally going to be used?
RCP?
RCP, thank you very much.
Which is concrete?
Yep.
Reinforced concrete pipe. Acronyms love them, baby.
Yeah, right. Okay, no further discussion? Then, roll call, well, Tim?
Aye.
Uh, Kevin?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Uh, Marilyn?
Aye.
Norm?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So it just has a procedural question, so Carl, you'll be able to update your memo accordingly?
Yep, will do.
So we guys, we can document it that way, and how many, how many incidences of this, um, RCP reference are there on the plans?
Oh, a lot.
Probably a lot.
So it's not convenient to request that be a, a plan change? Would it, would that be overkill in this case?
I think it would.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
So what, show it on the ASB, so...
Yeah, I think if you have something in the file that, that reflects the change, um, and then it, it shows up on the ASB, I think that's good enough.
Is it appropriate that if it shows up as the ASB, that there be a note someplace on the ASB, tracking to the date when the change was approved?
That'd be fair, yep.
Maybe we could just do it that way, then tie it together? Instead of requesting a, a, a plan change for every single time it shows up?
Yeah, it, Dave, does it make sense to have Cle, I mean, I know we voted on it, do we, do we put the meeting minutes, or do we have Cle just send us a letter and reference that letter for the...
It's gonna be on here.
Okay.
It's gonna be updated on the memo.
Okay, and just use that memo as the reference for the plan?
And then the ASBs, and if the ASBs can have a note tracking to the date of the change, then that hopefully ties it together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or the, uh, the revision code will, will reference the, uh, date of the, uh, yeah, okay, all right, good enough. Okay, Carl, you're off the clock, it was less than a half an hour, I went thirty-seven fifty.
All right, very good, thanks, guys.
He's charging your travel bill.
I'm kidding, Carl.
I know, I know, thank you.
Take care.
Okay, done roadway cross-section, anybody wanna go back a minute, yeah, or can you save it at the end?
Up to you.
Fine, I'm waiting.
Okay, so, next, we have Britmell Drive A and R, and again, um, I'm gonna recuse myself, uh, I guess Marilyn being remote is still...
Okay. You all said?
Yep.
Okay, Tamika, I have a request that you make a note that, um, well, Norm did recuse himself, in case there's any question later.
Yep, you got it.
Thank you. Um, now, this is the, the issue was the wetlands on the, uh, I did put my map, the wetlands on lot, lot three or lot ten, lot ten?
Actually, on lot three.
Uh, okay.
This was continued to just get clarification, whether or not a lot three, the driveway is accessible from the frontage street, and that there's no wetlands issue?
Correct, right, so, um, so Carl, Cle was able to, uh, discern some wetlands there and sent us a new map for that section of the, um, plan, and as a result of the wetlands that were identified, the driveway for lot ten was moved in the east, I believe, or to the west, anyway, it's moved away from the wetlands. Is that summing it up, Cle?
Yes, the wetlands, we, we marked the wetlands in the field, they're, you know, they're signified by blue flags, and then we went out and we picked up where they, where they fell on the plan, and we, we drove, we put in a couple of driveways showing, um, that the, the lots could be accessed from the frontage.
Okay, so anyone on the board have any questions, comments?
The only, Marilyn, the only question I had was, lot ten, that, that driveway isn't in any wetlands, correct? 'Cause I can't tell from the drawing that I've got in the packet. Is that correct? That it's actually in a little dead space that isn't wetlands?
That's correct, it, it does not require any wetland fill at all.
Okay, that's all, it looked like Cle came out and did a ninety-degree out to the road, which, or out to the property line, which I thought too, but I just wanted to check.
No, it didn't.
Okay, good enough, thanks.
Any other? Norm, Dick is filling in our new member.
Yeah, sorry, just a couple...
Could you just elaborate on the, on the sidebar discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I was just verifying where the wetlands were, first time I had just seen it, so Dick was just explaining to me on the main plan here, uh, the proposal that Mr. Blair had to move driveway for lot three over to, so, looks like the...
Lot three stays, the driveway just moves over closer to the line.
Right, over to here.
Yeah, and then lot ten, line is going over to the...
So just a, just a clarification question, that was all.
Yeah, and, and then Marilyn, I don't have a wetlands question, I've got a lot five estate lot question.
Um...
Oh, we...
State, like, state western, or not?
If you, um, just wanna find out...
Yeah, this is just the A and R.
Oh, okay.
This is not a special permit.
All right, so then, uh, skip that, it's just a special permit, or it's a, uh, A and R.
We did miss the permit, so did yours as well.
Any other questions or comments on the discussion with the driveway moving?
Wetlands on the driveway, I have none satisfied.
Okay. Do we need to, uh, vote on this, or is it just a field change?
Uh, Marilyn, what's appropriate here is a vote on the A and R itself?
Okay.
As you would call it, continuance of the A and R from a month or so ago. So the, the motion would be to endorse the, uh, mylar for the A and R showing the lots as shown in the plan there?
So you said we don't need to vote, am I correct?
No, we have to vote, so therefore, they're making a motion to endorse the A and R for Britmell Drive, the plan, and, um, as so depicted on the plan.
In the, in the adapted plan that we were sent?
We don't have an adapt, Marilyn, we don't have an adapted plan, what we do have is clarification that for lot three, the driveway is accessible directly from the frontage.
Okay.
But the, um, the mylar itself hasn't changed, we just got this to clarify that all the lots are accessible.
Okay, so, um...
So the plan is as, as is right here?
Okay.
That's what I made, as is.
So no vote?
Vote on this.
I'm in motion, wait for a second.
Second, I'm...
Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, roll call, um, Norm's not voting, Dick?
We gotta do, we gotta do discussion first, Marilyn, if there's any discussion.
I called that, but no one answered.
Oh, oh, sorry, I missed it.
That's okay. No discussion?
I don't know enough about drive, so I haven't educated, so...
Ten. If there's, hearing no discussion, we will vote on this.
Dick Williams, aye.
Tim?
Jim Norold, aye.
Uh, Kevin, are you voting in this meeting?
I'm gonna abstain on this one, I don't believe I have enough information to...
Okay.
I wouldn't have involved in the previous prior meeting, so I'm just gonna abstain.
Uh, thank you, that makes sense, and Marilyn, Sedoti, aye. So any other issues for Britmell?
Yeah, I was just saying, I think we had a question, whether or not the special permits, where this, where those stand, those will be scheduled for a future hearing date?
Okay.
Have, have they been submitted?
They've been submitted, but we need to talk about it in terms of the number of plans and the fee.
Okay, okay, um, so, then you put those off till the next meeting, or do you like, do we know when, or?
Um, I gotta talk to Norm about scheduling, though that's a pretty substantial, substantial amount of special permits, it'll be done as soon as possible.
Okay.
We're gonna have to, you know, do the hearing, a legal notice and all that stuff, but...
Should we do, uh...
Do you need an extension of time?
Like in other words, you know, do three or four, one week and three or four the next meeting, or?
Um, sorry, Dick, interrupt, we don't need an extension of time, because it's, it's a special permit, so we'll have the hearings within sixty-five days of filing with the town clerk.
Hey, Cle?
Okay, yep.
Why, why we've got you on the phone? Why, why we've got you on the phone?
I'm here.
I, this is where the gravel, uh, discussion happens. I know since we've approved the A and R, we're past that, so this is more of a, a request, because I saw in the A and R, it, it said Britnell Drive gravel subsurface, so you were already thinking what I was thinking. Is there any chance, you know, we could get maybe like, in just in, you know, in this area, like three or four hundred yards of gravel to make it more, um, palatable to people that are buying these pieces of property? Does that make sense to you?
Yes, I do whatever they, you know, Joe would let me do. Um, we are gonna be installing a sewer line up the middle of the road there too, so we're gonna have it dug up, so.
So putting gravel on top of that would be, if, if Joe approves it, that would be okay with you?
That's fine with me, you know, it's, it's, it's a historic, it's a historic road, so on those A and Rs, you guys are aware, like, there's no walls coming down, or trees coming down, or any of that stuff, cause I, I now have access through there. You know how, you know, we went through on the ones at the other end of the road, right?
Oh, yeah, all too well.
You can yell at me later.
No, but I am gonna yell at you if your excavator rolls down the hill on Bear Hill and ends up in my driveway.
I'll be yelling at somebody too, Tim.
Cause I saw it up there and I'm going, man, that's a steep roll, baby. That's about a quarter million dollars worth of equipment that I get to salvage out of my front yard. Alright, well that, I just wanted to bring that up and get it in the meeting minutes, cause I think it's a good idea, not only for the town, but it, it assists you in selling these properties that are off the road, and you know as well as I do how, how tough Britnell is these days to drive on, so this would be a, a huge selling point for you for these properties.
I agree, I wonder how the, um, if the town, the historic thing lets you put that ABC down rather than gravel, but it, it stands up a little better, you know, but. So.
Okay.
That's a discussion.
The word on the street, Clea, is AB, ABC is a, is a big no for Mr. Buckley, so gravel is a better choice.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Nope, that was it, I just wanted to get that in there.
Uh, yeah, any other comments from the rest of the board?
No comment.
Okay, so if that's the end of Britnell Drive, I will turn the meeting back to Norm.
Do, you want us, us to sign this right now?
If you like, or afterwards, when it's convenient, if you vote?
Yeah, we voted, she took all the votes.
Okay, okay.
You and Kevin abstained, and the three of us.
Voted.
Yep.
That's how we used it, the way.
A long time ago, a long, a year ago? What was left, got it, impressive.
Yeah, I snuck in this weekend and got everything signed for you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for signing that.
Marilyn, it's your turn to come. Can you reach through that screen and sign up?
Oh, I wish I could.
Just send us your electronic signal, we'll plop it right on there. Alright, now what's, uh, we got that out of the way. That was a big one.
Okay, let's go back in there.
Alright. I didn't, Dick, you had some comments, I didn't think I had, I went through them, I didn't see anything that I missed.
Back in, uh, J and K Ventures?
Yeah.
Um, about in the middle of that paragraph, R forty, R sixty district, Dick noted there are wetlands. Was it I or you? I thought it was you, Tim, that-
It was me that I brought it up, cause I was struggling with the R forty, R sixty thing with the wetlands, so. Uh, change that, um, Tamika, from Dick to Tim.
You got it.
Thanks.
Okay, and one thing that I did not find in here was where I questioned the pond's name, it was wrong on the drawing. I feel that it should be, uh, like every other map in town, it says the Tackler Pond.
If I remember correctly, um, he said that it was correct based on something, but I don't remember specifically what it was, and then he was totally, it would be left that way.
I did see that on a map, and now I don't remember what map I was looking at, that, uh-
Trust me, you know, when, when you worked for Mrs. Tackler, when you were about in the seventh and eighth grade, for Christ's sake, you-
It was her pond?
Yeah, it was her pond.
Wonder, does, does that up there have it listed, um, on our, our official zoning map, is?
That, that says right there, Tackler Pond.
That's the end of the discussion, then?
Where?
I see it.
Underneath the green square? The pond?
And that's what it's called, that's the official zoning map.
Yep.
That's the end of the discussion, that drug.
I don't want to add, I can't remember.
It was some-
I'll make that change in the minutes, um, but we may wanna have Dave follow up with Julian, cause I know when he left the meeting, he didn't indicate he was gonna change that.
I, I signed that A and R, didn't I?
The A and R has already been signed, um, I mean, I'm not sure that's relevant to the A and R being granted, it's more of a additional piece of information.
To me, I just wanted in the minutes.
In the minutes.
Yep, that's good, it should go in the minutes. So I guess what we, we could put under there? Where, where, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm in the brain, that's under, um, that's under east side of Kenwood, we just need to put a sentence in there, um.
Yeah, that's what he had down there, Kenwood Pond.
Yeah.
And that's not Kenwood Pond.
Just it, the, the correct.
Not the correct name of the ponds.
Tackler Pond, yeah, that's all we need to put in the minutes. Alright.
And that's all I have for corrections.
Anybody else, anything? I have a motion to accept the minutes with the changes.
So moved.
And I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, well, Tim?
Aye.
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
Probably just have, uh, Kevin recuse, just because he's here, so.
Uh, Kevin recuse.
Man, you telling me we're gonna be, I better shut up, I'm gonna jinx this, alright?
Yeah, yeah, don't.
Shut up, yeah. Don't jinx this, some of us. I just wanna beat the crazy lady home tonight.
Just, I, I realize that maybe shouldn't even say anything, one of the things just, really just kinda blew my mind. Uh, Clea says he's pulling sewer line?
Yeah, yeah. Where's that sewer line coming from, Clea, because those are all, the rest of the Britnell ones are all, uh, private sewer?
I, I-
You know, when you come around the corner?
We, we've, uh, had, uh, previous discussions with, uh, Joe Buckley on this, probably about a year ago, so. But, um, we, we, when we paved Bear Hill, Grizzly Drive, we pulled the, um, hopefully a water, but I definitely pulled the water, uh, sewer line off of a manhole coming down the center of that easement there. The bit, where, where the access is right now.
You mean the temporary road?
Yes, I have it there, so there's gonna be a sewer line, it's gonna go up there, and it's gonna go up the center of, uh, of, um, Britnell Drive, and then or off to the side, wherever Joe wants it, and then I'm gonna bring the water line up there too.
So you're gonna basically come up there and tee it into Britnell, and then go either way you need to go?
Yep.
Oh.
Yeah.
Interesting, okay. Norm, you could get an E one eleven and feed right into that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, don't.
Norm, you could almost go gravity into it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think Norm's thinking probably what I am, I like my non-paying sewer permit fees.
After the money I spend on my septic system, no way.
Yeah. Same way. I like my water and sewer being mine.
Yeah.
Alright, well that's good enough.
Okay, um, Maple Hill subdivision, I don't think we have anything on Maple Hill.
I didn't see anything on that.
No, there's, there's nothing for that one.
And next item is Bryce Lemon, don't think we have.
We do, it was a request regarding conditions, follow-up?
Yeah, you sent that, so. On a update.
We discussed that, one of the members had requested it.
Oh, the connection to the-
Well, the mechanism to just follow up.
That's right there.
Track and-
Yeah, uh, they are following.
Right, and, uh-
Right, that's how it started, right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Clea is still there?
I'm here.
Still there.
Um, as, as I recall, this this easement was not clearly marked on the plan that we have.
Very crude, and I couldn't tell, you know, Dave and I, we looked at it, and it was-
So, what eas- what are you referring? Well, what easement are you referring to?
Uh, the, the one over by their pond, one of the conditions that we have in the special conditions was you're gonna give the town of Rockland a twenty-foot easement from the Fish and Wildlife side all the way over to, uh, towards the Putnam Park.
Okay, I thought we drew that on the plan.
You, you take a look and you tell me where it is.
Okay.
It appears it's not complete and it's not labeled.
Okay, no, I, I'll, I can, you want me to make it so you can see it better?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And then talking with the Fish and Wildlife people today, I've, I've got the, you know, the ones I talked to were not from around here, so I'm gonna get to, uh, different ones.
Was that for the one near the detention pond, Dick, you were gonna speak to him about that?
Uh, well, that one there is, uh, DCR, and we still have not met yet. But, yeah, so I'm still working on that one.
Okay.
But this one here, this is on their pond.
Yeah, and on the open space in the back, you want something to come from the subdivision road over to there?
It's a twenty-foot easement, right?
It's just a twenty-foot easement, all I wanted, it is from their pond near the dam, because you, that's how they used to cross, or, you know, walk across with, where the dam was. Um, to pick it up there and walk towards, it used to be Donaldson's property.
Yep.
And then, uh, you know, in, in our open space rec book, uh, the planning board is supposed to ask those people for an easement from where you end to get us to Putnam Park.
Oh, is that, um, is that the Trailways lady?
Uh, not really, no, uh, this is, this is just something different, we're trying to get people eventually, we're hoping to get Putnam Park rebuilt and, you know, up and running and make it nice and have a place for people to go.
Oh, okay. Funny you mention that, we have two point six million dollars to do that from the Biden plan. If you read the new reg, it came out from the, uh, the, uh, feds, if, its infrastructure, and, uh, so you mentioned that to Ron about, we got some money to rebuild Putnam Park, he has two point six million dollars worth. Oops, sorry.
Alright, so anyways, that, yes, if you could get that a little bit, uh, highlighted or better, you know, depicted on that.
I'll do an X plan. I can do an eighty-one X plan, and we can put it right on record, I, I'll just-
Alright.
Julian, uh, tomorrow.
I'd appreciate that.
You got it.
And the only other thing was?
Well, we're a little bit, we're a little bit curious, because another one of the conditions is it says the applicant shall contribute fifty dollars at the time of the sale of each unit uh, to a homeowners association trust, uh, to be managed by the Bryce Lemon Homeowners Association, I'm assuming at this point you are the homeowners association.
That's correct. I have fifty dollars in, in an account, special account set up in that name at Webster First Federal Credit Union, and, um, we've been throwing money in it every time we close a house. Remember Dick, I met him, he made, made me do it a few, about a year ago? And I had, and I had to prove it to him. I had to send him the statement.
Yeah, what I need to know, the interest of the, and how much money is being made of that on a yearly basis?
I'll tell you something.
For our tax, we have tax forms we have to fill out, is this?
Banks are like awful on interest these days, what do you get, one percent or some, point one percent?
Uh, try about a quarter.
Yeah, there you go.
Alright.
We did that.
No, we're, we're all set for June fifth or twelfth, right, for recommending the road acceptance, correct? Okay.
And also that zoning change. Ken Gentleton.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I was just thinking since we're on Bryce Lemon, we're good for that, there's nothing else. We've got, we've signed off on the change for the-
The pump station.
The pump station.
Yeah, speaking of the pump station, uh, that mylar has been endorsed, and it's, it's available for pickup at any time.
Oh, thank you, yeah, we'll be able to get it, cause we already put the fence in. So, yeah, we gotta, we gotta get that on record.
It was fixed, huh?
Okay, good.
I already told George he had to upgrade his, uh, uh, what do you call, the easement, uh, for the road, because it's gonna go around that now.
And, and Clea, when I was over there, you forgot the no smoking sign next to the propane tank.
You really gotta pull one of those? I don't think-
I'd ask, I'd ask Chief Buckley, NFPA usually requires that, but, uh-
I would agree, yeah.
Ask the chief, cause him and, him and Seth are actually the required ease that, but at least it, in our gate stations, that, on the, uh, gas side, we have to put that next to every tank that we put up.
Wow.
It, it's sort of the lawyer's way of, uh, we told you, dummy.
So my other, I have one question, and, and, and have you guys been brought up to date on the, on the stuff that Concom's been asking about drainage and so forth?
No.
Never heard a thing.
Not heard a, a peep.
They, they sent out a, they sent out an email before the last meeting, we answered most of it, and they're gonna take a site walk, but you know all that water that's coming down onto lot thirty-nine and, and, uh, through that, there's an easement there, but there's a, there's like a swale that comes down, a rock swale that comes down onto the, their property there, this causing a lot of water in, in their backyards and so forth. So we're gonna put, we're gonna put a pipe in. We wanna go under the road, you know, through, under, in, in the guy's yard, down, down the side of his driveway, and then under the road, and tie it into that pipe that goes into the detention pond. And, um, I'm, I, I'll, I'll go to Kyle with, uh, you know, with a, uh, report for, just to get a sizable pipe, I wanna put a drop inlet at the end of that swale, and I don't know if you guys saw it, but kinda like what we did up on, up on, uh, Britnell Drive there, that, that driveway that used to be Helly's, that one that goes up to those other peoples. We put, we put a big swale.
Yeah, I know all about that property.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, we're gonna do, probably do the same thing there, I and gonna go across the road, I, I, I'll go to Kyle with it, but you know, we're, we're trying to get that, the backyards all cleaned up, you know.
So you're just gonna have basically a big drainage tile, Clea, that, that drains over to the, uh, detention pond, then?
Exactly.
Get rid of the, that'll get rid of the excess water.
We're gonna have to put it in a pipe, there's just so much, we gotta put it in a pipe, but I gotta size the pipe and all that, so, so I, I just wanna make you guys aware that we're, you know, we've been dealing with that with the Concom, uh, you know, that-
You better think about that, that same pipe connecting to the other side of the cul-de-sac coming off the other side of that hill.
Well, that's, that's just gonna pick up, Tim, honestly. It's gonna pick up all that water, that's what it's for.
Alright, cause I, I could see you fixing the problem on the, call it the uh, west side of, of that, of that, uh, cul-de-sac, but I could see the future east side having the same problem.
Yeah, and that's, we're gonna bring the water all the way around and down, down that way.
Okay, great, kill two birds with one stone, great.
So, I just wanna make you guys aware of that, other than that, I mean, you know, we've had, we put out a no, notice that we're gonna be planting trees up there, and lots thirty-nine and forty sent back and asked, requesting not to have trees in their lots, I, I assume you guys-
Try not to get shot, Clea, please, I, I, we don't need anybody shot over tree planting.
Well, I know, and I, like, last time they called the police and they threatened to shoot people and everything else, so I mean, I is it, you care, or is it, uh, I mean, I, it's gonna, there's gonna be two lots right together, that there's gonna probably four trees missing, that's all. Anyways.
As long as they're okay with it, I don't care, I mean, donate those trees to, uh, the other people in the subdivision if they want them, I don't care.
Yeah, I mean, I, me either, I mean, if, you know, or they can, they can probably put them in their backyard if they want or whatever, but you know, we're starting to get that, we're trying to hopefully get that on the Fall Town meeting, so trying to get that-
Exact.
-wrapped up up there right now. And that's it for Bryce. I don't know if Dave knows, but we, I think we're pulling like eleven permits phase three. We've already pulled some, but those are all sold over there, we gotta get those built quick.
Yeah, you, you gotta, you gotta buy the lumber before it goes up anymore, right?
I'll tell you what, I, it's unbelievable, I mean, I, it's, it's like triple what it was, honestly.
Yeah, Clea, I heard the average house- Yeah, Clea, I heard the average house is thirty to eighty thousand dollars more to build now because of the last four weeks.
I would agree, the, the, the average house I build, usually there's twenty thousand dollars in framing them and now there's forty.
Yeah.
And it's the same.
Well, I heard the, the, uh, plumbing, the plumbing's gone ridiculous too, because the, uh, PVC pipe is impossible to get and the prices are going through the roof.
Well, my plumber hasn't yelled and, and, and gone up on his price yet, so, don't, don't say that too loud, okay?
So, all you need to do is build a sawmill, that's cutting your own timber.
Oh, man, that's all I need, is one more headache. Odd enough, it's odd enough having a s- a maple syrup business that my father loved up in Vermont there to run.
Oh, yeah, how did they do this year?
They, they actually, the, the syrup production is down this year, so, I don't, they didn't, they didn't, probably did about two thirds of what they did last year.
Oh, baby.
You know?
Yeah, it, it, it wasn't that hot around here, only a couple of weeks, so.
Yeah.
Bobby did pretty good, I heard.
All right, so that's, that's that for Bryce, um.
All right.
Brittenell Estates, we don't have anything, correct?
I don't think we have any.
That's correct, there's nothing for that, uh, there, you have a report from Quinn.
Already took care of that.
I guess that's it for.
That's it.
The subdivisions.
Clea, just got one question for you, Noble Hill, gonna do anything on that?
We're filing an NRAD, um, probably in the next month, you know, that, the NRAD is, is, you know what it is? It, it marks the wet, just marks, it, it locks in the wetland line, so we're gonna, we're gonna go to Concom with it, once we go to Concom. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, Clea, has that changed? Cause I, I had heard through my grapevine that the beavers have changed your wetlands over Noble Hill.
Let me tell you something, I killed, I killed a lot of beavers in there during, during the season and there's still one that's floating around there, I haven't been able to trap, we haven't, we gotta get a permit to trap the one, but, uh, it's, uh, when we took the whole beaver dam down, that whole wetland went go, is gone, it's just a stream now, well, those beavers.
All right, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, I, I heard that the, uh, the lawn, the debarcation line moved up, uh, not feet, more like tens of, uh, tens of feet, um, from the beavers over on Noble Hill.
Well, at one time we were walking in water, now it's all gone, so we're, we're.
Okay.
We think that it's gonna be, oh, we've got it all marked and it's on a plan and I'm sure the Concom will be, you know, diligent about making sure it's right.
Get them all, because you, I can tell you about the little buddies behind me, they, uh, Bobby Carlson missed two or, two or four of them and, uh, they started many families that refilled all the hutches.
Yeah, and they, and they, they're menaces, they're awful, whoa.
Yeah, yeah, tastes like chicken, though.
Well, you know, I, I was talking to a guy that traps them, he actually eats them, I'm like, oh, how could you eat that stuff? Yuck, it's a rat! Anyways.
All right, good enough, that's done.
And, and thank you guys for your help on that zoning change, I know you guys had, hit that meeting for me last week and that was, I, I appreciate that, I heard that the, uh, the, uh, zoning board was pretty much okay with the change?
Yeah, did we ever come up, Clea and Norm, with, are, are we gonna change it from ZBA to Planning Board?
Yes.
Oh, I, I hadn't heard back on that, so, excellent, good, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah. Yeah, we have their endorsement.
Oh, excellent, can we do that on the, uh, industrial one too, for the next town meeting? Cause the in- industrial one by itself says ZBA two for site plan.
No, it's, that's all changing, Tim, with this, with this.
Yeah, that's, that's. Light industrial office and light industrial.
They're two different zoning districts and so, but the light industrial says, um, site planned by ZBA two, just those two do. And I know we're just focusing on this one, but we probably should change the other one to keep it, I'm not saying do it now, we can do it in the Fall Town meeting, cause I.
I think that's, if it's light industrial office, that's changing to, to Planning Board.
Yeah, but there's another one, Clea, for light, in, light industrial by itself, light industry that has the site plan for ZBA, cause I looked that up and saw it, and I'm like, yeah, we bet, I, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna confuse the issue at this point, let's just get through with this and we can fix that at another time.
Got it. All right, well, thank you again for everything, you guys, and, um, I'll get that, Dick, I'll get that easement done at Bryce Estates for you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, bye, everybody.
Good night.
Okay, Bear Hill, we already took care of.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Town meeting follow-up.
I guess, there is none because it didn't happen, it was postponed until the twelfth of June.
Yeah.
Apparently, pending resolution on the.
The twelfth of June will not happen unless it's back here in town, because Wachusett is booked. It came out today, so, I, the question is now, is it the fifth of Wachusett? Or are we having it up at Kevin's place, uh, on the twelfth? I mean.
I, I just.
Bring your lunch, yes. I, 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 I don't know what the plan is, so, uh, Karen was gonna ask the town, the FICOM was gonna come up with a request to the town administrator, what are we gonna do? So.
Well, everything, everything's, yeah, everything is gonna be open anyways, it's all gonna be right back to normal.
Yeah, and the fourth of July's happening, how?
You, you haven't heard about it? People are gonna still have a parade.
I, I, I.
And they're not, and they're not joining anybody that they're gonna have.
I joined the Wachusett chat and boy, is that fun to read and. Watch, watch you chat, so, no, I don't know, Dave, I don't know when it's, uh.
Yeah, we have that on in case there was a town meeting and we could talk about what happened to the zoning proposals and the street acceptance.
Yep.
That was, this agenda was put out before the Saturday, so.
But I, I can say that I'm hoping, but the town administrator put this out just to put you at ease, you're, you're gonna be funded again.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah.
As opposed to half.
Yeah.
Trying to walk with one leg, you know?
You've needed an oil change in six months now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. So, put the resume away and quit taking phone calls from Holden and Paxton.
So, you say June twelfth?
Twelfth is, uh, no longer at, like, there's some event at Wachusett that's not available, so.
But I mean, and right now, they gotta, uh, class it out there.
Oh, the twelfth, I know.
Is gonna be it, so, we got, uh, two, you're talking roughly two and a half weeks, uh, uh, excuse me, four and a half weeks.
Yeah.
Right, it's right around the corner.
Yeah.
And if people now think June twelfth in three weeks, they're still gonna think it's June twelfth even if you change it.
Yeah.
You gotta change it quick, for just the location, right?
Yeah, yeah, it is, uh.
Uh, there's Randy, who?
Randy makes all those calls.
Makes those calls.
Well, sort of.
In consultation with.
Yeah.
Town council.
Yeah.
And, and the select board.
And the select board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have, they have to agree.
In the town clerk's office.
By law, they don't have to. The moderator makes all the calls.
Yeah.
But he's been good enough to consult with the town, with the select board, they had a big issue last week that they should have been making the decisions on the town meeting, and I disagree with that, cause actually, we need Addison around to really disagree with it.
At least in the newer version that's coming up around by law, just, uh, heaven and wings.
No, I'm, uh, let's, let's move on, you're gonna get me wound up, I'm gonna go have a, I'm gonna have a Clea senior stroke. But we're still, I, I guess, everything, every, they're not changing any, um, warrants or anything like that, it's just been moved, so everything is the same, as far as I know.
You know, I, I, I don't know, I would have, I wouldn't doubt, but what's some of the numbers that change?
Well, the budget's gonna change.
I guess that's what this all has to do with.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's one of the big changes.
Yeah.
That's, that's a question, I don't know.
Or, or they have to just make those changes on the floor, I don't know.
Yeah, I. And how many of the other, is there anything else on the, on the warrant that was involved in the budget that made change, you know what I mean? There's anything else that we were looking to vote on, but now we don't need to, because now we're two hundred thousand dollars richer.
No, the only other thing that they'll have to do is, is decide what they're gonna do with a, uh, override.
Did it pass?
It's close, really close.
But it didn't pass, right?
No, it was so far off, it was like four to one.
Yeah, right.
But I was surprised that there was like a hundred and fifty-seven people voting for it.
Yeah.
What if they knew what they were voting for?
Yeah.
You never know.
So, but to restore the budget to the what it is, I think they're gonna need a couple hundred thousand dollars.
It's, it still sounds that way.
Yeah, me personally, I'd vote the school budget down and let them go back and figure out what they need to do to get it, to get below two and a half, but that's me, that's my personal opinion.
The thing is, the thing is, I've got, I've got a hunch, play their cards low and off, just they know they're gonna get three out of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are we still first or not?
No, Holden's first, they vote next Monday, my time being is next Monday in the seventeenth.
So, we're probably gonna be one of the.
One of Paxton?
Third or fourth.
Paxton actually delayed theirs, their town meeting too, they delayed before us.
He's talking before us, right?
I don't know what, I don't know what they've done, cause Paxton was in an override situation too. And the way, uh, the superintendent usually plays, that he figures out what he needs to help Paxton out, gets them under their override and then they bless it and then we're stuck.
Yeah.
That's the game that's been played for decade, a decade at least with us, so. Yeah.
Anyway.
That's out, that's out of the meeting.
Okay, master plan update.
Uh, right, so a survey was generated, uh, the master plan steering committee reviewed the survey, it was subsequently modified with some amendments. Um, the master plan steering committee reviewed it and approved it and it was published last week. So far, as I understand it, there's about a hundred and fifty responses so far, um, overall, it's a, it appears, it's more lengthy than it actually is. I think the estimated time was twenty minutes, but I, I've heard people take it in ten minutes.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Um, it's about sixty questions or so, a lot of the questions are pretty straightforward, uh, you know, with like three answers, there's a few questions that are more nuanced. Um, this, once again, is looking to get information on housing, land use and economic development, so the survey is, will be open at least until May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. It might be extended as needed, if we feel we wanna get more results, one of the things we were hoping to get was a giant push at town meeting by dropping off a flyer at town meeting to let people know that the survey exists, but since town meeting didn't happen, we weren't able to make that big push. So, we're gonna keep our options open, if we need to extend it further, we will, um, I think we wanna get as, we wanna get as much as possible, I think for the town center study, we probably like nine hundred res- uh, survey responded, so.
Well, we gotta get that sign up on the town center.
Once you get that signed, that's correct.
I'll get it.
I was just gonna ask a question about the sign.
So, anyways, that's it in a nutshell, the survey's out there, if anybody's interested, it's accessible through the town's website.
That's, that was my question, the town website. Um, how else was it sent out there? Email?
Facebook.
I got the email.
Email blast.
See, that's Facebook.
What's Facebook?
It will be.
That's for old people, you're all set.
Oh, okay, just look it up in your Blackberry.
We'll do a refresher on that if it hasn't been, I think they got bogged down with town meeting information, so we'll get to them again, Facebook, the town website. Uh, there's an Instagram account tied to the survey, uh.
And a Twitter.
Master plan and Twitter, so there's several ways to get.
Oh, there's gonna get shared, it's gonna get popped out there, and yeah, some sort of, in the center of.
Did they talk, David, about?
That's, that update, thanks.
They were gonna get that into the schools?
That's another, that's another tier.
Yeah.
We're gonna be pushing, we didn't wanna push it out at once, we wanna be able to push it out and re-push it every single week, they had a, a group that we worked previously, I think.
I just think now that there's no town meeting, they should hit the schools, because.
Does it give it to the kids?
Uh, no, it's electronically, cause we don't have any paper, there's no, there's no budget for paper.
That's part of it.
Yeah, to get it out electronically.
Yeah, that's, like we did for the town center study, we did approach the schools, they were very helpful to us, we appreciate their support, so we're gonna send this.
So, the town sign can't be used, but what about a piece of plywood that's just somebody paints?
Yeah, I know what.
You know, please, please go to our website and help, you know, I mean, some sort of notification up on the center.
Oh, hey, you could, you could legitimately use that historical society sign, use old school.
A truck.
You know, with letters.
Right.
They, they.
I don't, see, I don't know that, is that, Dick, is that historical society sign owned by the town or can it be used for anything?
We can access it.
Anita runs it, yeah.
I'd say use that, I mean, at this point, because nobody else uses it except for occasionally, what's going on with historical society.
That's on the list, I have permission to use it, you just have to see how town meeting, if that's gonna bump any of the use or not, so, that's on the list.
Okay, I just said use it now, cause the.
It's on the list.
The, what do you call it, the highway sign is gonna be used for town meeting.
That was on the list too.
Okay.
I think, I mean, if there's anything else you think we should hit, let me know, we did get to the council on aging.
Yep.
And we got to the library, we will have a limited number of paper copies available for folks who want the paper, they can pick them up at this planning office. Uh, during normal business hours, we will print those out to order, other than that, we're trying to keep it electronic, um.
Sports churches, have you talked to any of the churches, do they ever make announcements?
That's a good idea, maybe some businesses will allow us to put up a, a flyer in their buildings to let them, people know that it exists, if they're interested, we also have a QR code.
I saw that.
People write to the survey.
Fancy, yeah, cause I can just get printed out anywhere and put, you know, right on the, the glass door, in the toolers or in the pharmacy or wherever.
Some of that, yeah.
We put that QR code, I think you might have, you might have some people hitting that with their phones as they're walking around.
Yep.
I'll have to figure out.
But we have to print that on paper, though.
Yeah.
We do have that.
Yeah, like twenty?
They, the, uh, the Fire Brigade's doing a golf tournament, we got QR codes, I'm like, how do you golf with a QR code? And, and of course, I'm getting.
You didn't know what one was?
I know, I just don't use, I haven't used it ever, I.
We have this.
It's like a UPC code that you see on.
Yeah.
Clear one, okay.
Yeah, it, it, at the, at the job site, it'll take you to a, what I've used it for is it takes me to a safety site and then I can go fill in all my safety information.
Watch this, let me see. So, Dick, this here is called an iPhone, right?
Yeah, but what, what do you hit for a button?
Well, you're gonna.
Oh, you gotta get the app.
You're gonna have to get a reader.
A reader?
A QR reader.
Yeah, one of these things.
Yeah, I just did that and now that pops right up.
That took you right to the website?
Right to it, so, so this is what I have here, so see. It's called a QR reader, you go into your app store, you hit QR reader.
It's free.
Right? And then it's just like a camera, so that's all it is, is a camera, right? And then as soon as it hits that, boom, right, clicks on, so this is a so putting that, I think, out and about it, though.
That's a good idea.
People walking into pizza place waiting for their pizza, you know, they're gonna hit it right there on their phone and maybe do it right down there.
We'll see if we're gonna crush some of the businesses, see if, uh, Scott will help us out down the road here, uh, and other folks.
Yeah, they'll let right to it.
The sports things, you know, I used to know the baseball games, people.
Okay, I gotta, I guess I gotta get that, however you get it. Don't get it too much tech, Dick, yeah, I just, I, I got enough I have to deal with. Yeah.
All right, so that was master plan update, master plan, town center study update. Yeah, town center study update, so the town center study group met today, we were continuing review of the forum and recommendations made at the forum, recommendations made for the members, we're getting down to the final stages of this, the idea is to put together a report with the, um, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to put together a report, they look at priority parcels, they look at recommendations and put that all together. Once we have that, we'll then, um, publicize it to various boards and commissions and let people know it exists, uh, and also seek feedback before we publish a final document. So, this project is scheduled to end on June thirtieth, but we've got a lot of good feedback so far, and one of the items you talked about, Dick talked about was to better connectivity from the real trail to the town center, that had to do with one of those conditions, so.
Yeah.
That's it in a nutshell, um, so we continue to work on that as well.
Open space and recreation room.
Yeah, so, we received an email from the Open Space and Recreation Committee that one of the members who was appointed from the planning board has resigned from the Open Space and Recreation Committee and that the Open Space and Recreation Committee is looking for another member from the planning board to replace that member. So, where you put that out there is information to this board to see how you'd like to handle that, if at all.
Cause we always put the new guy or new person in first, sort of a victim of choice.
Well, I'll honestly, Dave, the town center development committee is how much more time are we actually talking about with that? Yeah, so.
Two. Pretty much.
I would, I would volunteer, are you on it for AdCom?
Yeah, now I have to set.
He's on Open Space for AdCom, right, cause you have to have AdCom planning board.
I think that's the way they wanted, I forgot the other requirement or what the issue was, but they didn't want somebody for the planning board specifically.
I think it always was that, that's how it was written out. And then how many meetings per month and days and times, you don't know, once a month, twice a month?
Once to twice a month, depending, you know, what looks there and it's only gonna take, I think, isn't it two and a half years?
Yeah, two and a half years. Uh, yeah, uh.
I mean, is, is there somebody on there for the Concom?
Yes, she is chair. Yes, she is chair.
Excellent. You tell that she needs to start cleaning her open space up for the official bylaw for the ConCon? That they're responsible for all the open space in the town? Do they know that? They're supposed to be cleaning, monitoring, uh detention ponds, all that stuff in the open space? Oops.
I was on ConCon and that's one of the things I uh used to read is some of our conditions and some of these subdivisions. That was never taken care of.
Nope, the big ones, the, what is that? The east and west? Um bright, or Brit- not Britnell, um Brunel.
Brunel.
Those have never been, I remember Gary, he had, he had to get a, have somebody take a fence down so he could even get to the detention pond? Cause somebody ignored that they couldn't build a fence in an easement.
How about rolling ridge? To my, that's my knowledge, nothing's ever been done in those detention ponds either. Yeah, well, yes, that one was taken care of.
Was it?
Yes, a couple of years ago.
Okay.
I found what I was looking for. So they meet once a month. It appears that they meet the last Wednesday of the month.
That's the twentieth that we're meeting next, next week.
I didn't see that on the agenda for May, but I'm, I'm backtracking to April. They met on April twenty eighth. So like second or last Wednesday of the month.
Thursday. Or it could be Wednesday or Thursday. They, you know, they're, they're, they're trying to, one of those two days, I think it was the ones that they went after. They found that Monday and Tuesday was uh booked most of the time.
Okay. So I, I. They meet, they meet once a month on the Wednesday or Thursday towards the end of the month, so.
So if you're already there, why can't you just be the liaison for the AdCom and planning board? I'm asking that, I'm kind of assuming, is that a conflict of interest?
It's not conflict, but I feel that it'd be more justified, uh somebody new get on. Um, let's just say that at the moment. I had a kick in the butt to get moving. Thinking seriously of getting off.
It does ring.
Meet different places and things to go and uh.
You're overloaded.
Yeah, it's getting, it's not getting better, unfortunately. And, but right now, especially after this. Survey thing on rice lemon and that trying to connect the trail, it's giving me something to strive for. It's something that was in the, in the book that says that the planning board, that went right down there. That box that you're looking at the cover. Um the planning board was supposed to go on to the Donaldsons and ask for it from them.
Really?
And they never did.
Ouch.
Yeah, and now they're not living there anymore and the new people are gonna be. Probably not quite as uh receptive to it as the Donaldson would have been. So. But uh I'm gonna hang tight and do the best I can.
So what happened? So is your motion going to make to this effect? You're interested?
I'd be interested, I'm, I'm volunteering.
I'll accept the motion to appoint Kevin uh to the open space recreation.
So moved.
Alright, I'll transmit that to the chair or whoever's running that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Well, Tim?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Norm?
Aye.
Okay, one fifty seven is the Bay Road's three lot common driveway decision.
I circulated that decision to the board. A couple of days ago.
And wow, what paperwork! But.
That was nice.
But when I read it, I thought you did a hell of a good job.
Absolutely, yeah, you know.
To me, it was nice and neat and, and to the. Give him an A.
Yeah, but the, the, the thing I got is I like, I like what Dave was trying to do is cut down some of all of these.
In the newer, you know.
The new version.
Yeah, the new version, cause thi- this just seemed like a lot of paperwork for a common driveway.
Yes, but I like it because.
Yeah, I guess, I just.
It takes trees to make pulse, paper pulse. And therefore, we're gonna have to get rid of the old trees and bring in the new trees, which take out more of the.
The only. The only question I had on this was the last under decisions. The homeowners agreement. Is that something that we've already approved and been filed with the Worcester Registry of Deeds? Cause I don't remember that.
It has not been filed with the registry of deeds.
Okay.
And I believe a template that had been reviewed by town council is what was being used for this purpose.
Yep.
And I don't believe the board was soft, uh need to have it further reviewed by town council because it looked to be in a similar form as historically used.
I'm fine with it. I just wanted to make sure all the i's were dotted and t's were crossed, so that was in, that was recorded and it'd go in the file with this. So we'd have everything with a complete package. There's only thing I wanted to make sure of, cause I, that's the only thing I have read here. Cause I don't wanna go through another Bryce Lemon.
No, I don't, I, I read through it and then I just, all I could think of was, you know, even the Philadelphia lawyer, who's gonna find a hole in that one?
Great, great.
So we need to sign this?
I'm making motion to sign a special mint decision for the three lot common driveway.
We already, did we, we voted on this, right, already?
It was voted to approve.
Just to sign this.
Oh.
This is for signatures.
Okay, second?
Dick Williams, aye.
Is there any discussion? Okay, Dick.
Uh Dick Williams, aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Uh Marilyn?
Aye.
And I think you need to abstain.
Uh Kevin abstains?
Norm, aye.
And for this, we just, we can get by with four signatures, correct?
Four is fine. Majority.
Alright.
It's the eleven, right?
Yeah.
Definitely see a lot more of these type of things.
Yeah, common nightmares, as I call them. Cause the second owner's gonna have a lot of fun. First owner, nobody's getting into the second one. Good luck.
Oh, yeah, that young down the road.
Yeah.
In this case, this is all kept in the family.
Yes, I was just gonna say. Yes, that one is, but the ones on Britnell. Wait till they find out the asphalt costs to replacing those dry, those thirteen hundred foot driveways and.
Yeah, around ten years from now, ten years from now.
Yeah.
They better.
Hundred dollar dollar driveway.
Yeah. Yeah, cause Norm, when I looked at it in ninety nine with Rich Helly, that driveway on Bear Hill was twenty five thousand dollars for that little.
Yep.
And Rich was gonna split, a good man, but I'm glad that it didn't work out. Cause now I have to have Clea as a roommate.
Okay, finally, registry of deeds.
So, this was the most recent one. How it was filled out, we changed the number to three.
Right.
This is the current form. And this is due every year after a change of election to indicate who the planning board members are.
Gotcha.
Who's authorized to sign plans and how many people needed to sign for ARs.
And not only that, they, your signature, how you write it here is how you have to sign all the ARs to. Sloppy. Well sloppy, but. Yeah, I used to sign it Charles Richard Williams and it was just taking too much, especially if you add fifty eight pages of bright one or whatever it was.
Tamika, are you on?
Charles R. Williams.
Yep, I'm here.
Hey, a- and I think you do this for uh that esteemed leader of ours. But just because I know that as of July first, there's gonna be no money in the account for our stipends. Can you get those rolling now? So they can make it on June, the June uh petition? Cause after that, though, there'll be no more money unless something changes, but.
I can definitely do that.
Excellent, thanks. I need my retirement account to increase. I got Becky to send the whole money to the state retirement account. So I don't get any money, it just goes in the retirement fund, so down the road, I'll have some little, I'll be able to buy uh fries with the sandwich at McDonald's.
Wow.
Awesome. Chuck Patterson told me, he goes, why don't you, why don't you that little pit in the month throw it into the state retirement account? Like, not a bad idea. But it's not gonna matter next year unless something changes.
That's too bad for Karen. I didn't know about that, you know.
I didn't either. Chuck told me about it and I would've been doing it ten years ago, but that is what it is.
How many years have we been doing this?
You guys both, you've been doing it longer than I have.
Yeah, Mike, Mike Sullivan was chair at the time. For the planning voice.
Okay, this one we have to do twice.
Yeah.
Here and here. Print?
Norm, I'd just like to welcome uh Kevin to the board. I'm sorry I'm not there to meet you in person, but I'm sure.
Yes, and actually, we should all do that, yes, well.
Thank you.
And also, uh I'm sure most of you received a.
Richard Williams, I'm gonna help you out here.
Yeah. Uh email from Sean.
Yes, I gotta respond to him, I have it.
Can I be authorized to?
Oh, yes.
Send a thank you back to him on behalf of the planning board.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the select board will have a new person.
Sean did a lot of user service.
He uh, she starts, I guess they got a meeting tomorrow.
I'm pretty sure it's a meeting.
Think they do. Maybe it's.
Wednesday?
They do.
Yeah, they.
Tomorrow night, is tomorrow night, Tamika?
Yes, the public hearing for uh the prison camps.
Yep.
Yep, yeah, the prison camp stuff's tomorrow, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask the town to take it over.
The Rutland State Park?
Not the whole park.
Come on, why not?
Prison camp and I want.
In for a penny, in for a pound, baby.
I, I want the two fields, the, the hay fields that are beside it, beside them.
Go for the blood swamp and I can own my own hunting facility.
And then I want the field turned into baseball fields and that charging.
I'm tired of kid target practice.
Tower.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just. Oh, I almost took a kid out this weekend, they were.
Okay. There you go.
He darted out behind a uh Tahoe and I didn't see him until, literally was almost on top of him. Just like, ah, didn't toot the horn, just gave him the look. Yeah. I, some kid at the field down here, he was behind a Tahoe and wanted to get over to uh market, uh marketplace.
Yeah.
And just ran out in front of me, didn't, and I just, I didn't squeak the tires, cause I was only doing thirty, I'd just go through there, but still it was.
I know they improved that parking, but it's still not good.
No, no. Especially if you got a big truck and F two fifty or a Tahoe in there.
It's just heavy.
I'd usually go below thirty anyhow when there's playing fields, cause there's been too many kids that darted out and, yeah.
I tell you, uh, you know, it's one of the reasons why it was so nice to have sight walks for the town center review. People had a chance to really take a look at the property, you know, and, and down there. If it was something else, you know, the. You don't realize how steep it is over in the back over here.
No, not until you actually walk and go down those flights of stairs or.
I did go by that house and there's just people living there, but I wonder if it's a rental. Twenty six.
Jack here.
Memorial, yeah.
Oh.
Cause I looked on the Land Glide too and.
I was gonna take a look.
We own a lot right next to it, the town does, right?
Yeah. I, I wanted to take a look and put the. Elevation in, in there, the, just see how steep it was in the back.
Do you guys have this?
This is another awesome app. So this is a Land Glide. So this shows every single parcel. You're gonna click on it, it'll tell you who owns it.
Wow.
That's what I look at, Land Glide, have you seen it?
No, I use the.
Unbelievable.
I use the one that uh is on the town website that the assessor has.
Yeah.
The GIS one?
Yeah, it's similar, yeah.
Yeah, it's the one I've used before.
Land Glide.
It's for Marilyn's and then Marilyn's the only one left. Alright, good, thanks.
So, you know, even if you're out walking around in the woods.
Yeah.
It is within three feet, so I'll be walking with it and it will show you the property and I can, I mean, it's within three feet of, as you're walking around, it's.
Alright, nice. Holy crap, of course. Let's adjourn in ten minutes.
Very good.
Used to be the curry was lived in there, back in my time. And now uh, some of the curry is DPW and O Cam.
It's my kids.
Guess I was there.
Is there anymore? This is the humble of the board.
Um, I would like to just thank everybody for coming to the open house.
Yeah, yeah.
And Marilyn, I hope you can join us the next time. We may meet in the other room or larger table.
I think that's a good idea. Oh, I see. I had you on the small pictures, but it now that you just switched to the larger picture, I can see that's the telephone. It looked like it was a strange animal crawling out of a bag, but it didn't. It didn't move, so I figured Tim was safe.
Oh, that thing, oh, yeah.
Is there a, um, I've got everybody, is there a, um, other than the bylaws, the books, so you're reading on all that stuff? Is there a time or a place and a kind of upcoming meeting that we could just set aside some? Open dialogue or maybe I can even just come in and sit with David if it's okay, if it doesn't violate any. Well, you know, opens, you know, meeting laws that I can just come in and just kinda just get more educated on.
One of the things that we like to try to do, we haven't had a chance to do it much, is a business meeting where we can sit down and have a discussion about. Various topics and or, you know.
Update our subdivision bylaws.
Regulations.
Protocols and stuff like that, and just.
You, you're talking about ordinary operation of the planning board?
Just for my own education, yeah.
Any members free to come.
Yeah.
Stop by if they'd like, I mean.
Doesn't he have to schedule with Ron though for your time?
Hey.
I'll go put a memo under the door.
So I moved to the side and we just got.
Still hear you.
Um, I think, isn't, isn't it the first month you have to have a top shelf read and then the second month?
Oh, shit.
No problem. So if you'd like to stop by, that's fine, um.
Right, yeah.
Convenient, to call ahead, feel free, otherwise you can, you know, it, it's hit or miss, mostly I'm here, but.
Well, what I'll probably do is I'll just start reading through and I'll just start jotting down some things.
One thing I will be looking for, and I have it someplace, there's a document, but uh some years ago, it's called roles and responsibilities of planning and zoning boards. It's a two-part presentation put together by the um, um, by one of the planning organizations. So I, you might find that a useful information, which I'll just distribute to the board as a whole, just as a refresher for some or a new for you.
There's another good one that we just got dropped on us about three or four years ago, that A and R, um.
The handbooks.
The handbook, that, I felt like a buffoon when that got dropped and we'd never seen it before.
If you, I guess, I can make, I can give you a reference, it'll say there's an A and R handbook, there's a subdivision handbook. Um, there's a few other ones that go together.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Good studying.
Yeah, of course, if you have any questions on the subdivision, uh breaks, zoning wise, whatever, feel free.
She's checking on your girlfriends, that's the problem.
I gotta go back through my thing and find out, did you see the, from central mass regional planning? About making reservations for next month?
Oh, for the get together.
I don't have that email.
I did not.
I didn't either.
I can't.
But I would like to, uh.
I tell you what, uh, let me, uh.
My luck is it'll be on the week I'm out of town.
Kevin, that's gonna give you an opportunity to meet other people too, uh. Alright. Alright, I'll get it out to, to everybody.
Yeah, I'd be great.
And, uh.
Try and, try and, they have, you know, the silver restriction, please.
Oh, no, no, we, we don't believe in the restrictions anymore.
Okay.
Uh, no, they are, um, Genesis, the amount of people that have, will be coming in the area that they have reserved should handle everybody. At the moment, it's what it sounds like, um, I will no better come the twenty seventh. And, and I'm hoping that perhaps on our next meeting, Sean was our alternate?
Yeah.
We need to have another alternate?
Oh, oh, for the, um, for the delegates.
For the delegates.
Yeah, okay, um.
Cause it's Central Mass Regional Planning.
That's a good point. Okay, yeah.
At the moment, I'm, I am, uh, still delegate, I am still the assistant treasurer.
What, this?
That's good.
You're the delegate for the planning board.
Correct.
Sean was the delegate for the select board.
Select board.
So therefore the select board needs to, it doesn't have to be a planning board member. It can be, but it doesn't have to be, it has to be a member of the town. The specific one for the planning board is a planning board member.
Correct, but in, in my opinion only, I feel that it's nice to have somebody from the planning board to learn, to take over, you know.
Oh, makes perfect sense, and if it's not a planning board member, it makes sense if that person has leniency experience.
Yeah.
They sit as a delegate for, you know, is not planning board member, that makes sense.
Yeah.
But it's gonna be their appointment authority, I guess this board maybe can make recommendations or.
Yeah.
But that wouldn't be appointed through this board.
That's correct.
What you raised a good point though.
You know, like I said, I just don't make the recommendation, no, to try to have a member from our board. You.
I wait to her off and I'll, uh, make my comment.
Alright.
Is there anything else?
Nothing else that I can think of.
I'll accept the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Bring down, roll call vote, Tim?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Eight oh five.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Norm?
Aye.
We are adjourned.